Starting our recording and if you could just, I'm going to broadcast right now. If you could hold out for a second or two, just to make sure folks have a connection. So we are live and streaming in just a second. Thanks. So I think we're good to go. I see we have a couple of counselors just migrating them to a panelist status. And I just want to make sure we have our counselors here for with us for the joint hearing.
I am here, Director Ford.
Great, thank you. So I think we're all set. I'll leave that to the chairs.
All right. This is Bonnie Sontag, Chair of the Planning Board. I'd like to open the Planning Board meeting for May 5th, 2021. I will do the roll call and go through the agenda and then hand it over to Counselor Shan. Alden Clark.
Here.
Beth DeLil.
Here.
And Gardner is absent. Tanya Hartford.
Present.
Leah McGovern.
Here.
Rick Tainter.
Here.
MJ Verde.
Here.
Don Walters.
Here.
And Bonnie Sontag here. We also have our note taker, Linda Guthrie from the Planning Office, Andy Port, Caitlin Sullivan, and Jennifer Blonschek. The agenda for tonight is to open with a joint public hearing with the Planning and Development Committee and Committee of the Whole on a change in definition of use number 613, open storage to storage slash warehousing. We will continue after that with the Planning Board meeting. We have one public hearing for Caswell Development at 2125 and 27 Hancock Street for a definitive subdivision and courts and lanes special permit. Our other business consists of approval of minutes, planning updates and other updates from the chair and from the planning director. I will now hand it over to Counselor Shan to open her meeting and get us going with the public hearing.
Thank you, Lou. Thank you, Chair Sontag. So my name is Heather Shan, Chair of the Planning and Development Committee. Take roll call tonight. Counselor Igerman, are you here?
I'm here.
Counselor Wallace, are you here?
I am here.
So this opens the Planning and Development Committee piece of the joint hearing tonight. We are here to discuss ordinance, well, order 240, I'm sorry. Order seven, ordinance 73, which is ordinance to amend section VE of the new report zoning ordinance to the definition of use number 613 for open storage. I think at first I would like to have Jennifer Blonschek discuss this because it's part of the overarching zoning rewrite and it's a cleanup item that is going to occur in the business park. So Jennifer, would you like to speak to this?
Good evening. This is Jennifer Blanchet. As Heather noted, this, this is largely a cleanup item, wanting to make a clarification to the existing ordinance where whereas the existing ordinance does reference that retail storage warehousing is prohibited. We, it goes on to say such as mini storage stalls for hire. The, there has been an evolution of, of uses through time since this ordinance was written. And we wanted to clarify that indoor warehouse storage was in fact allowed if it was not open to the public. So this is not your U-Haul or a store all type place where anyone can go. This is, this is really a warehouse facility for either a manufacturing establishment or for an offsite, some sort of offsite business. But this is really a clarification. We do go, we do talk about the screening standards and this is simply to to clarify the detail that the retail storage warehousing was not to prohibit indoor where indoor storage, rather just the publicly accessible type storage facilities such as U-Haul. It did accommodate the request of a particular applicant. And we have spoken with members of the business and industry park to make sure that this is in conformance with their expectations and the activities that go on there. And they did agree that such a change was appropriate.
Yeah, and Chair, if I could add a comment to that, this is Andy Port. Just from a generic planning and land use perspective and economic development, generally speaking, you know, it would seem best practice to allow the broadest possible business in the business park, provided they don't have conflicts. And in this case, as Jennifer had pointed out, the primary concern we've heard from the business park over the years about different uses has been retail or customer traffic. So this particular use, because it's, there's a sort of, you know, warehouse style use without the public access per se. So it's sort of bulk warehousing is something that could generate, you know, revenues as any other use in the business park, but does not present that type of conflict that we've seen elsewhere. And generally speaking, a diversity of businesses in the park might be good for surviving different, you know, economic situations in the future. So I didn't, I don't have any particular concern about this adjustment for those reasons.
All right. Thank you, Director Ford. Chair Sontag, do you want to open it up for public comment?
Yes, we'll take public comment at this time.
So if you're in the attendees and want to raise your hand to comment, please do so. If not, we can close it to public comment and discuss it amongst the boards. I don't see any hands.
Yeah, Chairs, I'm not seeing any hands at this time.
And Planning Board members, any questions, comments? Don't see or hear any. I'll turn it back to you. Counselor Shan.
So with the Planning Development Committee, counselors, do you have any comments or questions you'd like to make?
I do not have any comments or questions.
Thank you. I see Counselor Igerman has his hand up.
Yeah, just a couple of things. First, shouldn't we also amend the parking table? So that's Roman numeral seven dash B. The parking table is, will have the wrong use indication. I'll still say open storage. That's, and also when I looked at the use table, something has been lost. It, it's actually incomplete what the parking standard is for open storage. So we may want to correct that while we're at it. I don't, I don't think you have to renotice everything. The public realizes what we're up to here.
I would concur with that, Counselor.
Yeah, so, but I, I think it might, you know, while we're at it, we might as well clean that up so that we know what the parking requirement is for enclosed storage.
Okay.
And if there, if there is agreement from members of the council on the planning board on that, and that is incorporated in the recommendation of the council, we can revise language accordingly prior to that.
Well, but there, there is a discussion because of what the standard doesn't say. So currently I'm looking it up now. It says one per company vehicle plus, and then it's blank. So I'm not sure, they probably mean, I'm guessing, one per company vehicle plus one per employee. For example, the previous use item says one per employee plus one per company vehicle. So, you know, that might be, make sense. While you're chewing on that, the other point I wanted to make is that we, first of all, it's really bizarre that we don't have warehousing anywhere in our, mentioned in our code. But we don't have freight forwarding mentioned either. So I just wanted to make sure that Jennifer Blanchet doesn't think that by adding this, you'll get freight forwarding. Doesn't mean I don't want freight forwarding in the business park. It's just, it doesn't say freight forwarding and there are, there can be impacts with that that are greater.
And primarily traffic counselor, is that what you're referring to? Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if you had an Amazon, if we would be so lucky to have an Amazon distribution center, that, that can be pretty intense. Again, it's a special permits. It's not the end of the world. That's not by right anyway, but I thought I'd flag it.
What section, you said section 7B, but I'm not seeing the specific one you were quoting, Counselor.
Yeah, you go down to use 613. So you go to 7B, that table.
Got it. Open storage. Okay, now I see it. One per company vehicle plus. Got it.
You know, and that, I, I assume that's a typo. You know, one per company vehicle plus.
Right.
Something.
And what should it be? Are we?
In, in my experience, they all start with the one per employee plus one, the default is one per employee plus one per company vehicle. So like Counselor Igerman says, I do believe that that would be the appropriate insertion here.
Okay, and that means that if I've made an appointment to come to my storage unit, I would put in one of those.
No, you, no, that use is not allowed. You are not allowed.
You can't do that. Yeah.
So I thought this was not a drive up, but it was by appointment only. How would this be? Then explain how, how the use is to be used. Thank you. I'm glad I stumbled over that.
Well, there are, there is the traditional warehousing, which I think people are familiar with, which is a, a truck comes up and it unloads whatever it is. Whatever it's storing and then the truck drives away. I think where, where there is a specific use that is contemplated, there is a company that, that goes to your house, loads up your, your box of things into a pod, say, and then stores it. You don't have to, you don't come, you can't access anything at the site. But six months later, when you've returned from your trip to Europe and you want your pod back, you call them up and they deliver it back to you.
Uh huh. Okay. And if we use the example I used to see Boston Ballet storing with a big truck storing or pulling things out of Mersin aside there, it's the same idea?
The same thing, that people are not coming and accessing and, you know, and it's, it does not have the same public face availability that the prohibited retail storage facility did.
Right. Okay, thank you.
If I could, if I think from the planning department, I think it would be amenable if there's other language adjustments folks think might be appropriate. I think that Jennifer spoke to the, the general purposes or assumption here about the adjustment to be made. And I just highlighted the, the key components that I think are essentially being adjusted or clarified here.
Okay, well, if there are no other questions or comments from the Planning Board, I could take a motion to recommend approval of the proposed zoning amendment as amended to the City Council. And that would include the, the parking use. Would that be appropriate?
Well, to clean it up, why don't I make the amendment? I'll make the amendment. So I propose to amend the ordinance to add a section that corrects the title of use 613 and section Roman numeral seven B boy, so that it reads storage slash warehousing. And adds the phrase to that section. And one per, plus one per employee. If that makes sense, can I get a second on that?
Second.
Second. I will second it.
All those in favor? Roll call vote. Counselor Igerman?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Shan, yes. So three to zero. That's approved. So.
So the Planning Board, then I need a motion to recommend approval of the proposed zoning amendment as amended.
So moved, Rick.
Second?
I'll second that, Leah.
Okay, I'll take a roll. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. It is recommended. Thank you.
Then I'll make the, I'll make the same recommendation as amended. We recommend approved by the City Council.
Second. All right, all those in favor. Counselor Igerman?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Shan, yes. All right, we will recommend approval on Monday night at the City Council meeting.
Counselors, we, just for the Office of Planning and Development, we will get you revised language that can be incorporated into Monday night's meeting.
All right, thank you. And if we can just get that to Rick, Richard tomorrow, that would be great.
Will do.
Thank you. All right, I will take a motion to adjourn the City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor. Counselor Igerman?
Yes.
Counselor Wallace?
Yes.
Counselor Shan, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Have a good day.
Thank you. We'll continue the Planning Board meeting with the public hearing for Caswell Development, 21 to 25 Hancock Street, as well as 27 Hancock Street. Applications for definitive subdivision and another application for courts and lanes special permits continued from April 21st. I will hand it over to Attorney Mead on behalf of the applicant to get us started.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellman, Costa 30 Green Street, here on behalf of Caswell Development, and Jake Caswell is with us this evening, as well as the project engineer, Steve Sawyer, and the project architect, Eileen Graff. You're in the next slide, please. You might remember at our initial meeting, the board reviewed the criteria of both the special permit for courts and lanes, as well as the subdivision plan. And there were a few things that needed to be addressed by the peer review engineer, as well as an updated landscaping plan. And the board had had some comments related to the rain garden. So we got a final peer review report from Phil Christensen, which included confirmation that the stamp landscape plan, lotting plan, enclosure reports were received. And that the engineer, from an engineering viewpoint, the plan can be approved and any minor changes in engineering and plans or drainage can be made prior to the start of construction or the issuance of a building permit. And so we made the changes related to the rain garden at the end of Levitt Court, which I'm going to have Steve go over. Some of the board members, as you might recall, were concerned about snow being plowed down Levitt Court and piled right on top of the rain garden. So Steve, Steve made a redesign in that area. Since our last meeting, we were back to the zoning board. And the zoning board approved a special permit for two family use on 21 to 25 Hancock. They were waiting to see our redesign or what the applicant was going to do regarding the new interpretation of the DCOD relative to 27 Hancock. And so we're back in front of the zoning board with that new design on Tuesday. And we just received it. And so I've added it to this presentation, which we'll go over in a little bit, just so you can see how it lays out, even though that's beyond the purview, I think of the, of the board for this particular application. So with that, what I'd like to do is turn it over to Steve so he can show you the changes that he made relative to the comments that the board had, as well as Phil Christensen. Steve?
Good evening. I guess can we go to, let's see, next sheet. Can you continue down, next sheet? And then one more. If we can zoom in to the back, to the, to the bottom, basically, yeah, perfect. Thank you. So you can see, prior to this, we had just our, our roadway had just standard sheet fall off to the very end of the cul-de-sac or very end of the roadway here. And we had a rain garden. There was concern about pushing snow. There was nothing to control the, the snow being pushed in the rain garden. So what we did is we super elevated the road. So all basically super elevated, elevated the road, it tilted the road to the left gutter line. So the storm water will run down the left edge of the road. Then we have a little stone, a little bit of a, a stone edge where the water will flow into the rain garden. It's sort of, well, it's, it's off to the left side of the road. So now they can just push, push the snow off the end without impacting the rain garden. And to ensure we catch all the rain guard, all the water, we have a little section of curb at the end of the road that any storm water would hit that directed to the left and into the rain garden. So I think we have addressed the board's concern. So as far as much easier maintenance, maintenance for this. And then as far as this, this stone area here, or this gray area here is the stand pipe, the same before we, the same design as before is the, the rain garden itself is eight or 12 inches deep at maximum during a maximum storm event. But when the water gets to six inches deep in the, in the rain garden, it overtops into a stand pipe. And there's a leaching pipe that introduces the water into the ground. It's all good gravel material out there. And so it's perfect, perfectly, perfect application for this. And then actually, if we can grab the next slide, it'd be great. So zoom, pretty much zoom into that top left corner. There we go. Perfect. Thank you. So as you can see, what happens is when, during larger storm rates, the, the main concern is the water flowing off the, off, off the back of the property onto the budding lots. So what happens here, not, not only do we have the, the curb to stop the roadway, there is a berm that runs along the property line. So what will happen with the rain garden as it overtops during extreme storm events, it'll run along the edge of the property on our property and sort of wind its way around into the low area between our, our property and the rail trail where there's a, basically a low in this upper left-hand corner, there's a depression or a low area with an outlet pipe. An outlet pipe where the water during extreme events flows into the, into the rail trail storm drain system. And there's no change as far as the, the water, water rates were reducing, not only rate, but also volume off the property. So, and that is confirmed with the peer review. So that's basically the major change, major change on the, on the project between the last presentation and this.
So if you could go, Andy, down to the landscape plan, which I think is after sheet 11 here. There we go. So again, I'm gonna, this is the landscape plan. It actually has the new footprint of 27 on it. It hasn't changed from the last time the board saw it. And so, but I just wanted to show you with the new footprint of 27. Not yet approved, of course, by the zoning board in that particular instance. And then Andy, if you could just go down to the next slide. So I might remind the board, these are the units from Harris, excuse me, from Hancock Street down the rail trail where the current industrial site is. And the next slide, please, Andy. Again, this is on Hancock Street, looking down to the, to the south or to the east. And next slide, please. And this is on the rail trail, heading towards Hancock Street from Purchase Street. And next slide, please. So we're requesting the board approve the special permits for courts and lanes in the subdivision approval. And I'll remind the board on the next slide, please, Andy, that we had requested a couple of waivers from subdivision regulations, which are related to the preexistence of Levitt Court. One, that the minimum right of way width of 40 feet for Levitt Court, since it's existing, be 25 feet private way to, to be improved. Two, to provide the cul-de-sac or turnaround. We're not providing a cul-de-sac or turnaround proposed. All buildings are going to include fire suppression. We've already gotten a sign off from the fire department. And we've provided plenty of room for backing out of cars out of the two driveways at the end of Levitt Court. The curb radius of 25 feet at the intersection, 12 feet is proposed. Again, it's an existing intersection with Hancock Street. Levitt Court's been there since 1916. Curbing at six inch vertical granite curbing required. The granite curbing is only provided at the intersection with Hancock Street, not all the way down Levitt Court. And that sidewalks, sidewalks are required on one side of the road, and we're not proposing any sidewalks in Levitt Court, given the nature of the court. And the one waiver that's not listed on here, and Steve can talk about it a little bit more, is the additional waiver of 4% grade at the intersection of Hancock and Levitt Court. And it's supposed to be 4%, and we have it at 4.8. Is that correct, Steve?
Yes, that's correct.
And with that, Madam Chair, we're happy to go over anything else you would like or take any other questions for the board, but those were the outstanding items from the last meeting.
While you're still on waivers, there was another one, the last one you added came from Phil Christensen. And there was another one suggested, very minor, but it's still, the design doesn't reflect the contents of the plan lot frontage and lot width on the corner lot where you're supposed to be able to put, Andy can describe this much better than I can.
This is the 80% square requirement?
Yes, exactly. Could you explain that? Because I always have, get tied up in knots about that one.
Sure, the, the regulation is making a reference to this expectation that a square can fit in the lot without being chopped off, essentially. That's 80% of the area, the frontage on any given side, 80% of the frontage in the district. I think that was noted by Phil in his comments that that also should be listed as a waiver granted by the board.
I'm happy to do that, except for that, we certainly can do it if you would like. These are preexisting non-conforming lots. We're not changing the lot configuration at all. So we're not creating a new lot. These lots existed. And therefore they preexisted the lot width requirement that exists in the zoning table. These lots have existed since 1916.
Yeah, Jennifer and I discussed this, and I think at least I concur with that. I believe that Jennifer doesn't want to speak for her, but I believe that, I don't have any objection to that. I believe that's accurate.
So just to confirm, it's a preexisting nonconformity, and therefore this requirement that came in much later does not apply.
Correct.
All right. If Planning Office is with that, we're fine with it as well. I'm just glad that it showed up in Phil's comments and that we could address it. He also mentioned that there were several just not discrepancies so much as notations that needed to be made on various plans. Have those been updated per his?
Yeah, they, they all been updated per his request. They're, they're basically on the plan, ready to be submitted for the final, you know, the final plan submission. I guess what I propose is once we nail down the footprint of lot units, what's that, A, A B, that that final plan be submitted. Final, that final footprint be submitted. I, I would say that we'd probably update the stormwater calculations based upon the roof, you know, any of the, the minor change of the footprint. See that, that would have zero, basically zero impact on, on the stormwater calculations or minimal that are as designed. I'm sure it's going to be able to handle it just because of the fact that the percentage increase or decrease would be insignificant in relation to our treatment and mitigation. So at that point, we'd update, update the plan and provide it to the, to the planning department, the final, the final plant, construction plan for the planning department.
Okay. So I guess what, what Steve is saying is that what we would, and I think Phil would concur with this, and I think he kind of did in one of his last letters, that those notations be made and be confirmed prior to the issuance of a building permit. And that condition be included in any decisions the board has.
Well, I'm going to push back on that and say that we, as long as Steve is saying it's already going to be incorporated into the final plan submission, that it be in there. And that we see that, that we see that plan before we take our final vote. Just so everything is clean at the time of the vote.
So Steve, can you talk about what notations you were, that Phil asked for? Because my understanding is we have a letter from Phil that this board received, which is an email dated April 20th. This says Caitlin, with the additional information submitted this morning, which the board This says Caitlin, with the additional information submitted this morning, which the board already has. I am recommending from engineering viewpoint, the plan can be approved. And minor changes in the engineering plans and drainage analysis can be made prior to the start of the construction.
Yeah. So it was basically that as far as his comments, there was some, um, I think detailed keynotes that, that weren't. You know, the detail call out was not consistent with what the detail was on the, um, the actual key number on the. In the detail sheet, which sometimes happens because as you're adding and, and removing details. And I think there was a couple of spot grades, uh, spot grades on the plan. And then finally. Many times your elevations that are indicated in your hy- um, hydrology don't match the exact elevations on the plan. But the intent of the hydro, you know, that as he stated in the, as he stated in his comment letter that. Yes, hydrology works, the drainage works, is just an inconsistency with the, with the. The elevations that were referenced in the hydrology said, but it's, it doesn't impact how the drainage will function. As designed.
Thank you for that clarification. Let me open it to plan board members. I don't need to go through all the, the details from my notes. Um, if you all want to, uh, chime in, please.
I have a few questions. First of all. Could you explain the? I think I understand. Could you explain the last sheet of your presentation, which you haven't shown us yet tonight? It's a, a plan showing individual buildings rather than duplexes?
Yeah, I, I'd like not to go there yet, but I can tell you, well, I'll go there. We had a discussion at the last meeting that, um, whether or not at the very end, whether or not the board would be interested in. A 6C, a- at the time, the zoning hadn't passed, as you know. From the, the city council. And so the applicant wanted to know if the board would be interested in a 6C. And so what we did was we laid out the 6C, um, but we can't do a 6C until we get approval. Of a court and lane and approval of a two-family use. So, um, I was waiting until we were hopefully going to have approval of a court and lane and subdivision tonight. And then I was going to ask the board if was interested in this, because we still have to go to the city, get back to the zoning board. To get approval of the two-family use on 27. So that's the purpose of this plan. It is not part of the current application before the board.
Okay, so, uh, the question is related to this. One of the, I think it's another waiver that may be needed. There is a, um. Uh, a provision in the subdivision regulations. Saying that street numbers have to be assigned by the assessor. And included with the application submitted to the board, the, the definitive subdivision plan. And so it would make a difference, I guess, if we go back to the plan that you're actually asking for approval for, which is the two-family. There would be, one of those presumably would be one Levitt Court and the other would presumably be three Levitt Court, because. They get their front door access from Levitt Court. And according to the city's street numbering requirements, duplexes have to be A and B. So. They have one A and one B and three and three, or two A and two B, or whatever it is. I don't know how the numbering works, but it, there would be each of these buildings. Would have a number. It would be two numbers on the court. So I guess. First of all, is that your understanding of the city ordinance and the subdivision regulations? And if so, then, um. You would probably want to request a waiver from that, from section, uh, 6.7.5. Which requires the numbering to be on the plan that you submit to us.
So I, I would ask for that waiver, and here's the reason why. It's the, the, I think there's a lapse in the ordinance versus what we do now for 911. And it's actually the assessor and the 911 officer who assigns. The, um, the, the numbers and letters. So I would ask for that waiver, because what we would do is once we got approval, then we would go to the. To the assessor and the E911 and say, what do you want to name this? And call it. So I, I wouldn't tell you that it's absolutely going to be Levitt Court. A and B and C and D or whatever. The current assessor records call this 21 to 25 Hancock and 27 Hancock. And so depending on what happens at 27. It may have different numbers, but I would ask for the waiver. I thank you for bringing that up, Rick. But it, it's gonna, we have to do whatever the assessor and E911 officer tells us to do.
Okay, thank you. Another question was, uh, I, this is very, very, very minor. But you've added a curb at the end of the road. And we don't have a detail in the plan for that. And I, I don't, you know, typically you'd have a detail showing curves. I guess. I'm not sure what to do about it, but it, it seems like there should be detail, but maybe it's, and there's probably a standard detail that Steve has. You can plop right in there, but, um. I'd like to reach us raise that question.
Um, yeah, it would just be a standard five inch granite curb.
And is that, is, is the five inches what we, is what the standard is for our subdivisions?
Well, no, well, for a, uh, mass highway is, mass highway is six, six inch, but actually they. The engineering and, uh, and DPS is, they're fine with five inch, especially for a project like this, um, project of this, this size.
So it's, it's not a big deal to, to add that to the sheet.
Uh, if needed, um, it's pretty standard. I can add that detail to the sheet.
And the other question I had, which, which is, it's a, it's an issue that I want to raise. Is the, the trees in front, um. Which are. Would typically be street trees. I mean, it's typically be trees in the public right of way. But because of the issues here, uh, they're not. I guess what I'm concerned about is. Future maintenance and replacement as necessary. And so I guess the issue that I'd like to raise, uh, for discussion is. Whether it's possible to have a. Maintenance easement, uh, to the city. So that the city would have the right, but not the responsibility to replace a tree that has, that's in bad shape. To, to, you know, attend to a tree that's not being taken care of, et cetera. And just raising that for. For, actually for reaction from the client and also for discussion by the board.
I don't, I don't know the answer to that, Rick. Um, let me, um, let me reach out and, um, find out. Yeah, that, that's fine. We, we would be happy to include a condition that we provide an. Right of access to those four street trees, uh, for maintenance if. The city desires not to require. I will tell you that, and I, I'm not going to tell you probably anything you don't already know. If those, you know, in 15 years or 20 years. If those trees, you know, start to go over the city sidewalk and over the public way, the city has a right to trim them. Regardless, but that's fine.
Thank you.
Um, and, uh, this is Andy, uh, Rick, if I could just add to that, uh, if, uh, if the board is approving tonight or at the next meeting. I- i- if it could either be added to the plan or added to the plan prior to the start of construction of billing permits, that would be preferable, uh, consistent with what was mentioned earlier this evening, such that the, uh, final plans reflect that.
Yeah, we would, um, we, uh, we're happy to have a, you know, uh, prior to the issues of occupancy permit, the easement be recorded or something like that.
That works from the office's perspective. I'll defer to the board.
My question is, do, do we want to make that a condition?
Uh, uh, we're fine with that.
Good. Was there somebody else wanted to speak? Do I cut off? I'm sorry.
It was, it was me, but it was slightly different question.
Well, to that subject, I just want to confirm then the planning board is okay with prior occupancy permit? As compared to what was initially suggested on, um, building permit?
Right, this is, this is an easement recording.
I understand, but it was first noted by someone on the planning board about building permit and then, um. Attorney needs suggested occupancy permit. The planning development department was okay with it, and it wasn't, wasn't clear to me whether the planning board was okay with that.
Yeah, if I could, this is Andy, if I could just clarify, I think the original requirement, and I think this would be essentially two separate, uh, deadlines. One was for the submission of a plan addressing, uh, the details that were requested, uh, from Steve Sawyer. Uh, that would be prior to construction and, and billing permits. The other one would be prior to occupancy, and that would be for the easement, since the trees wouldn't be there yet. Uh, there isn't much need for, um, and then they wouldn't be getting occupancy until they get that. Uh, they would provide a easement to us. That would give them time to do that. So I, I have no objection to that myself, and I think that would be two different deadlines.
Did anyone else want to weigh in on that particular issue before Rick takes us off in a slightly different direction? Okay, Rick, go for it.
I appreciate, um, adding the drainage easement in the back of the lot. And I guess this is for attorney need, um. How actually does that work? You, you can't give an easement to yourself. So is, is, is it some kind of? You do a declaration of easement and then that gets recorded with the homeowners association? How does that work?
There'll be a, um, it'll be a condominium association, and so they will. What will happen is that, um, prior to the creation of the condominium association, the, the owner, who would be the declarant. Would create the easement as a reservation, um. Or a grant, depending on how we draft it, um, before the, um, conveyance, so that they can't grant, they wouldn't grant it to one another.
Great, thank you. So, so maybe, uh, it would be, I'm sure it would be helpful. If you could put that in your language and, uh, so that it can be reviewed by our, our attorneys, that we. Understand exactly the wording to be in the, um. The condition of approval.
Right, so there'll be, so we actually just did this, um, actually with Steve, uh, in a project in another community. Where we created, uh, two different condominium associations on two different lots. And, um, then there were cross easements. Across the properties to allow access and drainage and maintenance. And, um, actually, that city solicitor is your city solicitor. And so, um, we were.
Yes, it could provide us with that language would be great. That's all I have.
Does anyone else have something, um, outstanding from previous discussions or from tonight?
Uh, this is Andy, if I could just, uh, chime in on just the point that Rick had just made. Uh, I'm wondering if it makes sense, uh, if regardless of whether or not the board is approving tonight or at a future meeting. Uh, that that one might be appropriate to do as a condition prior to occupancy, that, uh, that demonstration that those documents are, have been submitted. Does that make sense, attorney need?
Yes, absolutely. And I would call them, I would just call them required cross easements. So just so you know, right now, um, 27 already has perpetual rights over Levitt Court. They already do. So those would continue, but we would highlight those in the various, um, condominium documents.
All right, I just don't, I'm wondering if there is something else outstanding. The maintenance of the rain garden to ensure its proper functioning, is that already incorporated into the operation and maintenance plans?
Yeah, so it was already incorporated in the, um, as part of the drainage report and the, the O and M was, um, reviewed by Phil.
So that's not outstanding.
No.
Anything from anyone else? All right, let me call for, um, public comment at this time. Before I do, I want to make a, an, sort of a contextual, um, statement. I saw the letter from a variety of, um, butters and concerned residents. Posted on the website. They had two major concerns. And I just wanted to let them know before anyone speaks. That the planning board has authority, um, for courts and lanes and subdivision. And under that, um, access to lots, utilities, drainage, sidewalks and curbing. And the use of the two-family. The use for a two-family in this, um, neighborhood. Which has actually been, uh, approved for one of the lots by the zoning board. But we don't have any control over the design of the structures. And I know these residents had quite some concerns about. The character of the neighborhood based on the designs they'd seen already. That is not under our purview. And I think we would save a lot of, um, time and effort on everyone's part tonight if we did not hear cons- uh, comments about that. But, um, certainly any of your other concerns, including, um, the first one that was listed in that letter, if you would like, any of you would like to, um, expand on. Your concern about construction and hazardous waste and so on, or hazardous materials. That would definitely be, uh, a topic for us. So I just wanted to put that out there so that you don't feel frustrated. When you make these comments and we say we have no authority over that. The comments about the structures and how they fit in the neighborhood and their design should be taken to the ZBA, um, next Tuesday night. So I'm also gonna, um, ask you to give your name, your address. And, um, I'm gonna let you, I know there was some concern about two minutes not being long enough to express yourselves. So. As long as you don't take 45 minutes, which is such an extreme, I just throw it out there. Be reasonable, and I expect you will be, and, uh, give us your thoughts. We'd really like to hear from you. So with that, I'll hand it over to, uh, Andy to let, uh, members of the public speak.
Okay, uh, the first person that is speaking is Mary Ann McCauley. And Mary Ann, you'll have to unmute on your end as well to address the board. Uh, just pending her, uh, having a microphone connection. I'm not sure if that's working properly, but. Mary Ann, uh, if you are having an audio issue, there is a call in number that you can use as well. Uh, that's posted with on the city calendar. Uh, it's not clear that Mary Ann has a, uh, audio connection from our end. It seems like she, uh. Can get the video of the meeting, but for some reason does not have a microphone connection at this time. I'm sure that's a technical issue on her end.
Uh, is there anyone else who would like to speak in the meantime?
And we have Tom Coleman. Tom, if you would like to unmute and speak to the board.
Yeah, hi, good evening. Thank you everyone for your time. In the course of the construction that's coming up. There is going to be a lot of disruption, um, and there will be, um, there, there are a lot of creatures that have been living in those lots for a lot of years. We had asked attorney need about any mitigation efforts that are going to be made by the contractor. In terms of, um, you know, so making sure that, um, there is mitigation for vermin and, um, other creatures. And, um, I'd just like to hear that question addressed as part of this public comment.
Okay, thank you. Well, we'll save all the, uh, questions, uh, for comment until the end. Oh, anyone else like to speak?
Uh, we have one other person who's raised their hand, uh, Kim Quint, and I, I'm not sure if it's Kim or, uh, perhaps, uh, someone else who's at that. Home was speaking based on our last attendance, but, uh, Kim, are you there?
Uh, again, this is, uh, Rob Jorgensen along with Kim Quinn. Can you folks hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Uh, good evening, everyone. Um, again, Kim and I are among the butters on Purchase Street. Uh, who show the back property lines of the project. And again, the project, excuse me, I'm terribly hoarse right now. Uh, the project is uphill from all of us. I still have concerns regarding the stormwater management, um, issue. The stormwater management solution needs to be maintained to perform properly. As has been said, and the, the design relies on all aspects working together, the gutters, downspouts, underground pipes. Call tech chambers, a dry well, and then finally Levitt Court directing word to the rain garden. I have four points first. I would hope that there would be a guarantee. For this solution to perform its intended role for a reasonable period of time. Say, I don't know what, again, I'm a layperson. I don't know what is reasonable, but I would hope for five years, 10 years. I don't know what might be typical. Needs to be some meaningful tool for addressing potential defects. If not, it would otherwise create unnecessary problems for the future owners or for the Purchase Street of butters. And I would hope that this provision would be included in the approval process and be made public. My second point, at the end of the stormwater report, there's a three-page operation and maintenance plan and a two-page inspection report. I would hope that there would be a meaningful enforceable incentive for maintaining the system, especially after the properties are sold. I don't know who the report is filed with, whether or not it's public, or there are penalties for not performing this sort of work, et cetera. Third, and Mr. Disorder already addressed much of the snowplow. The snowplows piling snow at the end of Levitt Court by the redesign, and I think that's a huge improvement. But I feel that there still needs to be language that is included or documents or something condo agreement so that there's guidance on what not to do, because even though there's, the water is diverted with a super elevated extension to Levitt Court to the left. It could still be disrupted by excessive snow. You get a really bad winter. And even even this newer, this revision could be inadequate. And lastly, you know, what document, if any, or what controls would exist? So that any future changes to the site or to the structures. Is there anything that would guarantee that the that that the are there protections that could be in place that would say, for example, if there were future excavation, so that it doesn't under damage underground piping? Or is that the future landscaping changes don't change the soil grade in such a way to affect the the design or that roots from trees that are harmlessly planted in the future? Don't clog underground systems that the root systems are terribly invasive? Or even things like the existing Norway maples that are on a butter's properties can go long distances and cause wreak havoc on systems. And again, I think you know, in conclusion, I think I would hope that there would be language and documents and meaningful tools for addressing all these concerns and that I would hope that this would be handled proactively and be part of the approval process and be made public so that you know, if this stuff is dealt with proactively, it puts the public at ease a lot better. Yeah, we're realistic. We know that things are changing here. A lot of our concerns would be best met by good public outreach, involvement, et cetera. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We have, I just want to check here. We have Tom Coleman's hand raised again. I just want to make sure, Tom.
No.
Yes, no, I wanted to make another comment. I want to make a comment about Kim's, Kim's observation that if the future maintenance of the water mitigation is the responsibility of the condo association. Having been a member of a condo association in the past and previous lifetime, you know, that's an expense that people really balk at. There's no obvious advantage to them to spend money to make sure that water runoff is not going off onto their neighbors. And so I think that that some kind of protection for the mitigation about the runoff should be above and beyond the condo association. And once the developer is out of the game and has sold these units off, it's gonna go back to the to the condo owners. And I can see a future issue for that from the condo association with the neighborhood as well. And by the way, I live at 24 Hancock Street. I'm right across the street from the development.
Thank you, Tom. We do have one person who's called in and I believe that might be Mary Ann McCauley. I just want to give that person an opportunity. Mary Ann, are you with us? Mary Ann, I think you'll have to press star six to unmute yourself. If you're on the phone.
Hello?
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, well, my intent was to read the letter from neighbors, but I will condense it. This is in response to claims that the proposed project has neighbors support. We are residents of the South End who share concerns over the proposed development for 2127 Hancock Street. The full project filing letter, March 2, 21, mentioned support for the project from neighbors. However, we are learning of an increasing number of residents who do not share this view. As only Director Butters needed to be notified, many others have stated that they were blindsided by the proposal and further that the hearing process thus far has neither allowed for a full airing of their concerns nor a thorough consideration of the project's impact on the neighborhood. We wish for our concerns to be on record and to be addressed by both the zoning board of appeals and the planning board. These concerns include the following. As per special permit criteria nine, the construction and thereafter use will not itself create hazardous materials and transmit transmissions. We would like to know that the assessment has been done, what assessment has been done of the bus garage structure itself? Specifically, the cement and soil underneath. This issue has been responded to only briefly, 21E from 1988, but nothing more recent. The second concern has to do with the structures and I've been advised that that's not in your purview. In conclusion, in light of these concerns and the lasting impact this project will have on a neighborhood many of us have called home for decades. We respectfully request that the zoning and planning boards not make a decision in haste. Rather that there be an opportunity for neighbors' questions to be answered and concerns addressed. We encourage the city to begin meaningful public outreach and discussion. Zoom meetings and two-minute statements have their place, but for a project of this significance, a development of this size has really rarely been experienced in the South End. It is imperative that we work together, be inclusive and promote community trust. Thank you for taking our concerns into consideration. Signed by myself and 20 other signatories, all residents of Hancock, Lunt, Purchase and Madison Streets.
Thank you. Andy, do we have anyone else who would like to speak from the public?
We do not have any other hands raised at this time, no.
Okay, so I will close the public comment section of this hearing. Go back into discussion with the applicant and ask that attorney meet or other members of your team respond to the questions and comments that were made by the public, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I think I took pretty good notes while the comments were being made. So I'm going to try to start with the first comment. So related to demolition and erodent plan for the site. The I just want to, sorry, I had a note that I was unstable here, which probably not the first time. So the applicant is required to pull a demo permit to demolish the building under the city and report ordinances and state building code and has to institute a rodent plan as part of that. And the applicant will undertake those efforts and comply with the law in accordance with that, with the ordinance and the state building code. As to the stormwater quote guarantee, as the board knows, this project will be peer reviewed as it is gone through. And in order to get permits, occupancy permits, it will have to be inspected by the peer review agent for the city as well as likely the city engineer and certainly the zoning code enforcement officer to make sure that what was proposed was built properly. So that is the guarantee that what is put before this board and approved and designed is actually constructed. The O N M plan and the maintenance required will be part of the condominium documents, a part of the cross easements and maintenance requirements. In addition, the the site plan, excuse me, not site plan approval, but all special permits will be referenced in the condominium documents and will have to be followed. And the language, the condominium documents will include that language. Happy to have the board have the condo documents reviewed to make sure that that language is in there. I don't have a problem with that. We include it in all of our condominium documents when we do projects like this. So the special permit will be included as part of the condominium documents. This approval will be, the zoning board approvals will be. And so everybody knows what the requirements are. As this board knows, obviously, if there are changes to the structures, those modifications would have to come back to the various boards who issued the permits if those changes were to be made. I do want to address the issue related to the hazardous material. So let's be clear that the condition in or the criteria, the ninth criteria of the special permit review says the proposed use shall not be conducted in a manner. It doesn't, first of all, it doesn't talk about the construction. And that's because the construction is governed by the building department and the state building code. Importantly, there was a 21E done in 1988. There were test bits undertaken by the then owner of the property who was doing institutional lending lending to purchase the property, the current purchaser. The change, the use from 1988 forward has not changed. It's an electrical contractor. There are there is no bathroom, I mean, there's no water or heat in this building. He used it to store wiring and pipes related to his construction business. So the use hasn't changed. And that's why you don't have to have a more recent 21E. My client is also getting institutional money on this. And those people are relying on that prior 21E because of the regulations under the Massachusetts contingency plan and Massachusetts general law 21E. So my client will comply with those rules and the ordinances and the building code related to the removal of that building and any testing that would need to be done, which at this point there is none.
Are there any further needs for clarification or comments by planning board members at this time?
Lisa, I just wondered, was that 1988 document given to the city or is that?
It's a private document. There's no
That's the one that you had mentioned
Right.
Last time.
Right.
So there hasn't been a more recent one done.
No, no.
Anyone else?
Bonnie, this is Don. A couple of questions, perhaps someone could could go back to Levitt Court at the end of Levitt Court, there's a, I believe on the plane, it says a fence. Is that a solid wooded fence?
That's an existing fence.
That's an existing fence. Does anyone know here what the what the existing fence is? Now, allow me to just say where I'm coming from. I believe if I read the plan correctly, it's 7.9 feet from the end of Levitt Court to the property line of one of the butters. And I just, you know, could see someone with when you're plowing, not that I necessarily think it would do damage, but that's not necessarily perhaps the legal point here is is that the a snowplow would easily push snow more than eight feet on onto the butters property. Now, to the extent the fence is a solid fence, that's obviously would pile up against the fence. But if it's some type of a split rail, et cetera, I could just see it going over onto the onto the other butters property. So that's why I was just asking about, does anyone know what type of fence that is?
It's a, it's a solid fence.
Okay. And again, somewhat consistent with with the comment I'll make in a minute. I will agree that it's always a a rough question with respect to how often do we provide something with respect to the as-built or the current design conditions versus something 20 years in the future. So it could be a solid fence now when five, 10 years from now, the post could rot and fall down. And in theory, what I just discussed is likely. Although we have that issue everywhere in possibly in the city, especially in the South End. So it's not obvious to me that the burden would have to go on this particular applicant versus anything else that's occurring within the city. Second point, though, does go with respect to maintenance. And I believe the applicant's attorney me correctly stated that there's there's covenants, there's homeowners, all those things. What it doesn't really do, and we've seen it in the past, or at least rumors around windows with other is there's no enforcement provisions. And the only way that I'm aware of enforcement provision, which is done on some other type of projects is requiring some type of a bond or surety that perhaps decreases over time to provide teeth into enforcement that the applicant is actually going to maintain something. And again, I could, I I'm not debating what's in the condominium documents. The only thing I'm saying is that if someone, if it's not followed candidly, and I appreciate others on the on on this call, on the planning board or the departments may disagree. There's little to no enforcement. So I'll leave it at that, Bonnie. I don't have a constructive, specific recommendation to change the special conditions. But I will say that I do hear the some of the butters concerns. And in my opinion, they're valid based upon past performance of the city.
I would like Andy to speak to this, where the city's responsibility on a new development, how far out it goes versus a homeowner who would, you know, a private individual who would build on their property and create possibly a similar situation. So I know we have an open application at this point, so two in in our case. And I'd just like some guidance on what is reasonable and to put in as a possible condition. And what is just, you know, neighbors dealing with neighbors over the long haul.
Sure. Yeah, thank you, Chair. And I think actually your last phrasing there kind of, I think, sorry, hits the nail on the head. They, we do have a project before us right now, and obviously, as discussed with the applicant's attorney, there's going to be oversight during construction of what's put in there in the long run, obviously, because this this project and these improvements could be there for, you know, a long period of time. They're when those issues arise and Don's point is well taken. Oftentimes, issues like that are brought to our attention by a butter who raises a concern. And what we would often do in this, in a situation like this, is determine whether or not the changes or the issue that is happening is inconsistent with the plans that were approved. At which point the zoning administrator would would step in and reach out to the property owners. It may be something that public services or myself or others are involved with, depending on the issue. But the bottom line is we would go back to what was approved and look to that to be restored. There are some things that happened and it's not atypical, regardless of whether or not a project is approved in this format that happened between a butters, things that happened along property lines that were in dispute. So each instance might be different depending on the circumstances. But if there's something that has a tie to these plans that the applicants are required to adhere to and the future owners are required to adhere to in terms of improvements, we would reach out to them and call for those to be restored essentially or addressed.
And that also is reinforced by attorney needs comment that all decisions are referenced in the condominium association documents. So that if there's ever a question about what they're supposed to be doing, they have reference materials right there. So we make our decisions and put the conditions in place. And that's what we've been talking about tonight with regard to the permit to go forward if we approve the applications. So
Bonnie, Bonnie?
Yes.
Hi, it's Steve Sore. Hey, I just something, you know, I've, this isn't my first project. I've done many projects in the city, some dating, some have been in place for probably over 10 years, maybe. Some dating, some have been in place for probably over 10 years, maybe 15 years. And I'm a little bit of a geek. I go around and some of the things, stormwater systems I've designed. I, after big rain events, I sometimes I'll take, I do drive by and look at them. Typically, I do drive, I do try and strive to design systems that are easily maintained. You know, I've been up to Evita Mechanics Court. You know, Toomey's is a more recent one. Toomey's is a similar type of design to this. Very simply, very easy to maintain. So that's part of it is trying to, you design an easily maintained system that's not expensive to maintain, which is, you know, this is similar. I've, I've designed, you know, this type of rain garden with overflow. I've, this is probably the third one I've done. Is one that's, is actually the ones that Evita still function perfectly, and they've been there for over 10 years, I believe. So it just some anecdotal or historical historic, historical data regarding some of the stormwater designs, at least I've been involved with in the city.
And just to follow up on that, Steve, Madam Chair, actually, the same builder did the Toomey subdivision as well as you might recall. So that, and it still works, as Steve said. And I, I would just add one other thing. I, I know that folks are concerned about. But actually doing this project the way we have proposed gives the city 100% more control over a project here than if the, than if the developer chose to do single-family homes on both lots. Because the road exists, so he would be permitted to complete the road and, and, you know, make it better pavement or whatever, and build a single-family home. And the applicant would be required to get no permits whatsoever on 21 to 25, except for a building permit. And on 27, a special permit for non-conformities, which doesn't have any control over stormwater or road design or anything of that nature. So as far as quote, control and long-term control over a project, this is it. He's stepped into control. He could choose to do single-family homes where there would be no control. And so I think that that point shouldn't be lost on folks that are concerned.
And I would just add to that, that because we have to have public, a public hearing on this, given the route that the developer chose, it gives the public an opportunity to weigh in, and that's why we're having this conversation. So
Right.
sort of a, a little bit going in circles, we wouldn't be having some of this conversation if it weren't for the public comments. Just like they wouldn't know what was going on if it were two single-family homes. So we're trying to make this as as transparent as we can. Those questions from the public were very useful. And I hope the answers they've got give them some sense of confidence that going forward, what is built and what is maintained here is, is what is being discussed tonight. And ongoing right through our decision process and the zoning board process. Okay. At this point, we have quite a list of findings and special permit conditions that we need to review. It's going to be a little, I apologize in advance, it's going to be quite a bit redundant. But we need to go through all of these for the record and to make sure that as we read through them, anything that comes up, we can discuss at that point and clarify. Let me just tell you where I'm planning to go, Attorney Mead, with this. I want to review these tonight, including the waivers and the conditions. I am going to propose that, that we continue so that the planning office can provide us with the two draft decisions with all the language in there that we have agreed to tonight. And that when we meet again on a date certain to which we will continue, that we can review all of the, the, make sure the language in the decisions is what everybody agrees to and take the vote at that time. And we condense the process by not having to have two meetings, one with a vote and then, and the second meeting with a review of the language. And the reason why I want to do that is, I hinted at earlier, I want to make sure that all the final plans on, on the applicant's final designs that they take to the zoning board are the same that the planning board sees and agrees to when we take our vote. That there is consistency there upfront and no need for possible alterations that might require modification to come back to the planning board, which might not be major and therefore would not be open to public comment. So I want to have everything clean and packaged on the night that we take our vote. But you, you will certainly hear where we are. There won't be any, I don't think there'll be any ambiguity about where we are on how we will probably vote on this. It's just that I want everything together before we actually vote.
We appreciate that process, Madam Chair.
Good. So everybody.
Could I ask a question before you?
Yes.
Yeah.
So one thing I've been confused about, and I should have brought it up earlier, is what actually we are approving on the plans? And by that, I mean, you know, you look at the, I, I know that we're not approving this specific building layout, the, the, the well, I guess the question is, the building layout of the site plan is before us in the, in the civil plan differs from the building layout in the landscaping plan. It's the old, it's the old layout without the reduction in the connect, size of the connection. And I don't want to be in a position of it being implied that we've approved something that is different than what is approved at the, at the zoning board. You know, you know what I mean? I wonder, I guess the, this is a question for the applicant is, is really what, what is the? There's lots of stuff. I'm, I'm looking at, I happen to be looking at this, the, the site man utilities plan right now. And there's a lot of stuff on there, ranging from building footprints to locations of utility lines to slopes of sewer lines and so forth. Is how much of that is actually being approved either through the courts and lanes special permit or the subdivision approval?
So if I could, Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
And I think, I think that, I think that why I, we think that the process that the chair has laid out, Rick, is a good process. So I would suggest to you that you're approving the road and the two lots, so to speak. It's a courts and lane. And then finally, you will approve, you know, I guess the, the location of utilities as part of that, as you would relative to where they fall in the, in the lane and the court and the stormwater. We will have, if, if this is the process you're going to go through, we will have the plan updated with that footprint and any modifications needed prior to your next meeting for final review.
And, and just thank you. And just to clarify, everything passed about sheet 13 is, will not be part of our approval, correct? The, the, all the perspective views and architecturals and all that sort of thing? Okay.
Right.
So we're, we'll have a, we'll have a, we'll have a plan set that's much shaved down from what we have before us tonight.
That is correct.
Great. Thank you. That helps.
But so that just reminds me that before we take a vote at the next meeting, we will review the updated plans and any modifications to be sure that they are in sync with everything we've talked about tonight.
Right. That would make the complete plan, plan set.
Yes. Good. Okay.
Actually, I, I have a, a somewhat similar question and refers to the special conditions. Number nine, where it talks about this is a private lane, the city will not be providing services such as source, plowing, et cetera. But going back on the point of utilities, water and sewer. And, and there's also a waiver for 25-foot right-of-way versus a 40-foot right-of-way. And that's kind of where it initially came up. Would, would someone please help me understand who's going to own the water and sewer lines in Levitt Court?
I, I'm going to let Steve address that, but I believe the city, it's just like any other private road. It's the, the condominium association for 25 would own it, but they would be shared. Those were your crossesements to use the water and sewer line? Because it's a service like any other. Steve, it's a service design. Is that right?
Yeah, the, these are basically, that's where it's a, you know, condominium. This is basically a, a large service, an aid and service for, foreign service for the water and aid and service for the sewer. So from probably, I, I guess from the manhole to the right, the Hancock Street right-of-way, usually the city, the city's responsible or up into the, or the gate valve on the water, on the private side of the gate valve, the, the private side would be responsible for that. And then as far as, I guess actually it would be to the manhole, all the way up to the manhole in Hancock, the private side would be responsible.
So, so Steve, thanks. And that seems to make sense to me, but, but to perhaps take something to, to an extreme. And again, it's simply for me and perhaps some others to understand. So why does the city care what happens downstream of the gate valve? If someone wants to use a different type of material, if someone doesn't want to go X number of feet below the line, if someone wants to use a vacuum line versus a gravity line, how, how does that impact?
Because the city has standards, so you can't just build any kind of service. The city has sewer and water construction standards, even for services. So they have to be built in accordance with the city and sewer and water construction standards.
Are you okay with that, Don?
If you, if you.
Yeah, I, I, I think I understand. I'm assuming the standards are performance standards. They're not, they're not specific standards. So.
They're, the, the, what kind of pipes you can use, what size of pipes you can use, what your connections are. And in fact, when you go to insert those, install those, the water department or the sewer department has to come out and observe the installation.
Okay. Yeah, the, yeah, the DPS, even private services, they're, they're all involved on the private side. The service is always, they're always involved with the connections and, you know, and they, they install meters. They're, they're 100% involved on the private side. They just don't maintain it.
Okay. Thanks.
They're involved in the oversight.
Anything else from anyone else on the board before we go through the findings and conditions? Okay, we'll start. I'm going to follow the list from the staff report. Starting with pursuant to section 5.7 of the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in Newburyport, the board generally finds the following to be credible statements about the proposed subdivision. One, complete and technically adequate plans and supporting material. Not going to read all the details under these, except as relevant, but just let it be known that as we've confirmed with Attorney Mead, the final plan set will be reviewed. But at this moment, according to what we've seen, the plans are complete and technically adequate. Two, adequate access to all the lots in the subdivision by ways that will be safe and convenient for travel. Specific to this development, the small lane shall provide adequate and safe access to three of the four dwelling units. The fourth unit will be accessible via a private driveway. Three, lessened congestion in such ways and in the adjacent public ways. The subdivision is not anticipated to contribute to congestion on adjacent public ways. Four, reduced danger to the life and limb in the operation of motor vehicles. The lane shall be constructed so as to re- reduce danger to life and limb. The existing paved width of 25 feet is sufficient to provide access to new residential units. Five, secured safety in the case of fire, flood, panic and other emergencies. The applicant and/or owner shall install a sprinkler system within each dwelling unit so that there is an increase in fire safety measures, given the reduced pavement width of 25 feet along the court that provides access to said units.
Can I just ask a question? The pay, it says it's a 20-foot wide paved road. I know we had a discussion about the 25 versus the 20 and that. Is it 20 or is it 25 that?
20-foot paved with a 25-foot layout.
Right. Okay.
That needs to be corrected.
Yeah, that should say 20 feet.
Correct.
Thank you for that catch. Okay. Six, compliance with applicable zoning ordinances. The projects shall be in compliance with applicable zoning provisions under the applicant, upon the applicant obtaining a courts and lanes special permit from the planning board and relevant permits from the zoning board of appeals. Seven, adequate provisions for water, sewer, drainage, underground utility, fire, police, et cetera. The subdivision has been engineered to provide all public and private utilities. Eight, coordination of the ways and neighboring subdivisions. The scale of subdivision and its location is such the coordination with neighboring subdivisions is not required. Nine, conformance with the design and construction standards described in the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land and in the attached appendices. The subdivision conforms to the applicable standards with the exception of those waived via this approval. These approved waivers as listed and described herein. We've talked about them tonight. We will take a separate vote on those at the same time that we vote on the decisions. I'm just making a note here to keep us straight when we come back.
And Bonnie, I think that, that last thing you read, I think as should be are.
Waivers are listed and described therein. Thank you. Ten, conformance with all applicable zoning requirements. Did I already read that? Projects will be in conformance with. Yeah, I did. Sorry.
There's two, there's two separate ones. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, that's right. They look the same, but they're different. But they are in conformance. Suggested special conditions for subdivision. One, stormwater management permit. Prior to the start of any construction for any site work, the applicant shall obtain a stormwater management permit under the city of Newburyport Stormwater Management Ordinance, Code of Ordinance, Chapter 17. From the Department of Public Services, since the project involves more than 10,000 square feet of land disturbance. Two, private maintenance. The lane shall not become a public or private way maintained by the city. Further, the city of Newburyport shall not be required to provide city services, including but not limited to construction, reconstruction, maintenance, snow plowing, school bus pickup, trash collection or police patrols along the lane. The roadway utilities and drainage facilities shall be privately maintained in accordance with a, it says homeowners association agreement. Should that say condominium association agreement?
Yes, ma'am.
That's it. Got it. Three, warranty slash maintenance plan for plantings. Prior to approval, a sufficient watering and maintenance plan shall be noted on the landscape plan sheet plus a note regarding warranty for replacement. The actual planting of the trees and shrubs shall be done in the field with previous coordination and oversight by the city. The warranty slash maintenance plan for the planting shall be for at least a two-year window after the certificate of occupancy is issued.
Bonnie, I was, I was reading something else. Is this something new or is it revised?
This is in the staff report. You'd have to have Andy respond to that.
My, my staff report is headed, I think I'm reading the right place, planting maintenance.
Oh, my goodness. I'm using the staff report from the previous meeting that things may have changed.
She, I can, if you would like, I can display the, the written version, if you'd like of.
Yeah, I forgot. I didn't want to print it all out again.
Great. Thank you.
I don't use it on the screen. Yeah. I'm glad you, so far, we haven't had any other
Right.
changes in wording. So this is warranty and maintenance plan for plantings. Go back up. You're just a little above where you are, Andy. We're still in subdivision. Number three. Uh, go back up, you're just a little above where you are, Andy. We're still in subdivision. Number three. Oh, yes, it is significantly different. Um, planting maintenance, the proposed planting shall be maintained by the applicant and future owners in perpetuity and coordination with and subject to approval by the Newburyport Parks Department for any work within the city's adjacent rail trail right of way.
Um, can we hold on to that for a second?
Yeah.
Uh, that's a pretty big ask there. So the applicant, uh, the applicant agreed to, uh, to clean up, reconstruct and plant all the plants on the city's rail trail in that area. They did not agree to maintain it, uh, in perpetuity. And we have a significant objection to that because that's a huge added cost to the owners, the property owners.
Andy, where did that come from, please?
Yeah, actually, uh, that was not from me. Uh, I think that may have actually originally, Caitlin may be able to speak to this, but I think that may have originated from the, um, rail trail project manager. Uh, some concern perhaps with those folks, the tree commission, the parks department about maintenance. Um, yeah, it's not something that we had, or I had suggested. Uh, Caitlin, do you know, did that come from, uh, either the tree commission or, uh, the rail trail manager, do you think?
Uh, my recollection is, um, that the senior project manager, Jordi Vining, was quite concerned about there being some sort of warranty. Um, and I think we had that in the previous staff report, and I think perhaps maybe you and I reworked it to be this planting maintenance, um, special condition.
So we're, we're happy to do the two-year, you know, I think the typical standard planting, uh, and maintenance for two years to, to approve eighty percent survival. Um, happy to do that standard condition, not happy to maintain the city's property and plantings forever.
Uh, this is Andy. I, I have no objection to that adjustment, but I would ask that it be a hundred percent survival of the tree plantings that are proposed as opposed to eighty percent.
What it's worth, Andy, I, I agree with you. I was thinking the same thing. Can we, can we see the previous wording? Is that possible?
Yeah, that's what I had. I, I think that's better, what I read before. Um, shall I read it?
Sure.
Prior to approval, a sufficient watering and maintenance plan shall be noted on the landscape plan sheet plus a note regarding warranty for replacement. The actual planting of trees and shrubs shall be done in the field with previous coordination oversight by the city. The warranty slash maintenance plan for the planting shall be, or at least a two-year window after the certificate of occupancy is issued.
That's, that's fine, but the applicant does not agree to take care of the city property forever.
And, and there's no com- comment here about, you know, survival rates or anything. It's just.
Well, well, and I think Bonnie, that's where I would, that's where I would like to, um, opine that I do think it's important, especially with on a rail trail where it has a very high public visibility, that the standard should be one hundred percent, not eighty percent.
For the two-year window.
Yes, I'm not asking for something in perpetuity.
Okay, so a hundred percent survival for the two-year period should be added to the statement in the previous staff report for warranty and maintenance plan for plantings, and we will replace this one with that one.
And actually, Bonnie, this may be a good place to, uh, add the discussion we had about a, um, an easement or a right of entry, however, um, the applicant wants to word it for maintaining the trees along Hancock Street.
Yeah, we, I, I think it would be, it would be appropriate to grant the city an easement for their, um, maintenance and or care at their, however you want to do it.
Yes.
If they want to maintain and care for the trees along Hancock Street.
That'd be great. So that would go be added.
That would be number, that would be number four.
Okay.
Yeah, if I could, um, I, my preference, I guess, and attorney me could speak to this from the applicant's perspective, but my preference would be to have something delineated, uh, on the plan set for future reference uh, for those areas, uh, unless there's some other indication as to, uh, how much area is involved.
Yeah, no, we'll have, um, thank you, Andy. It's a good point. Well, when we propose the easement, we'll do a, you know, like a attached sketch easement plan that shows the location of the trees. That's what, to your earlier point, that's why it can't be created until the certificate of occupancy.
Okay, and that we had commented on earlier.
Right.
Okay, so fire prevention will become, uh, five. Uh, I'll read from the screen. As proposed by the applicant, agreed by the Newburyport Fire Department in review of this application, all new homes shall include a sprinkler system. And then, uh, what will become six, construction of quarter lane. A covenant shall be entered into between the owner or developer and the city in a form acceptable to the planning board prohibiting the issuance of a occupancy permit until such time as the quarter lane has been constructed in accordance with the approved plan. Okay. Um, so that's everything under subdivision. Uh, we'll move on to special permit courts and lanes and findings. Could somebody else take over reading? I'm going to lose my voice. Well, we'll share it around for just, um, this first bit. Read it slowly so we can interrupt you if we need to. Who would like to do it?
I will take care of that.
Okay, thanks, Rick.
Okay, so, uh, number one. A court or lane shall not be used to satisfy zoning drainage requirements except as provided by an approved definitive subdivision plan. The applicant is applying simultaneously for a subdivision approval to create this lane. Two, a court shall have no more than two dwelling units slash lots. A lane shall serve more than, no more than four dwelling units slash lots. The applicant is creating a lane. Levitt Court will service three of the four dwelling units. Three, the court or lane shall access the property over the frontage of at least one of the lots being served by the driveway. The access is provided over the frontage of twenty-one to twenty-five Hancock Street. Four, the owners of the properties to be accessed by the court or lane must provide evidence to the zoning administrator that they have the right, that they have rights either by deed or easement to the court or lane. If access is by easement, the easement shall be recorded by the Essex County Registry of Deeds within ninety days of endorsement by the planning board or within seven days prior to commencement of construction. The recorded easement shall include the following. A, that unless approved within a definitive subdivision plan, the court or lane shall not be used to satisfy drainage requirements under the zoning ordinance. A subdivision has been requested. Could you scroll up a little bit, please? Thank you. B, that the city of Newburyport shall not assume any responsibility for the court or lane, nor bear any liability for saying. The applicant has agreed to maintain Levitt Court as part of the joint condominium association responsibilities. C, that a lot and or unit owner provided access by the court or lane and having an exclusive right of access or usage of any portion thereof, such as a spur accessing. Up, please. Uh, one lot and or unit alone shall be individually responsible for repair, maintenance, and upkeep of such portion. The applicant has agreed to maintain Levitt Court as part of the joint, should be joint condominium association responsibilities. Both twenty-one to twenty-five and twenty-seven Hancock Street currently have deeded rights to Levitt Court and have had same since nineteen sixty. D, that all lot and or unit owners provided access by the court or lane shall be jointly and severably responsible and liable for the repair, maintenance, and upkeep of all shared portions of the court or lane. The applicant has agreed to maintain Levitt Court as part of the joint, again, I think, condominium association responsibilities. Both twenty-one to twenty-five and twenty-seven Hancock Street currently have deeded rights to Levitt Court and have had same since nineteen sixty. This will continue, drop the D, through the easement and the condominium documents. E, the court or lane shall not become a public or private way maintained by the city. Further, the city of Newburyport shall not be required to provide city services, including but not limited to construction, reconstruction, maintenance, snow plowing, school bus pickup, trash collection, or police patrols along a court or lane. The owners will have joint private responsibility for Levitt Court. F, a covenant shall be entered into between the owner or developer and the city in a form acceptable to the planning board prohibiting the issuance of an occupancy permit until such time as the court or lane has been constructed in accordance with the approved plan. The applicant has agreed to comply with this requirement. Should we stop or keep going?
How's your voice holding up? I can ask.
Oh, it's fine. What are you doing? I'll, I'll keep going.
Yeah, if you're not interrupted, you're reading, you know, quite nicely. Thank you.
I'm conscious of my projection. One, the use requested is listed in the table of use regulations or elsewhere, as in the ordinances requiring a special permit in the district. That is, should be, should go, should say, or elsewhere in the ordinances, I think. Requiring a special permit in the district for which application is made or is similar in character to permitted uses in a particular district, but is not specifically mentioned. What a sentence. The property is located in the R-two zoning district where a court or lane may be created by special permit. Two, the requested use is essential and or desirable to the public convenience or welfare. The NZO provides that a court or lane is allowed by special permit in the R-two zoning district and therefore by its very nature has been determined by the city to be desirable. Three, the requested use will not create undue traffic congestion or unduly impair pedestrian safety. The formalization of Levitt Court is expected to have negligible impacts on existing traffic patterns and will improve the pedestrian experience. Four, the requested use will not overload any public water drainage sewer system or any other municipal system to such an extent that the requested use or any developed use in the immediate area or in any other area of the city will be unduly subjected to hazards affecting health, safety, or the general welfare. The requested use is compatible with the surrounding area. The requested use will not overload any public water drainage or sewer system or any other municipal system. Five, any special regulations for the use set forth in the special permit table are fulfilled. Any special regulations for the use set forth in the special permit table shall be fulfilled. I guess I have a question here. Are there any special regulations? Should, should they just say there are no special regulations?
There are no special regulations, uh, Mr. Tangter.
So why don't we just say that? Why do you say there are no special regulations for the use set forth in the special permit table?
Agreed. I, we should make that adjustment in the draft decision.
Thank you. Six, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining districts, nor be detrimental to the health or wealth. The requested use will, will not impair the integrity or characteristic of the district or adjoining districts, nor be detrimental to the health or welfare. There are several existing two-family structures in the neighborhood as well as a mix of other uses. I guess the question here, do we need to say it twice? Do the same sentence twice? There's. Is that the way, is that the way you normally do it?
It, for, for separate findings, I mean, is it?
Well, it says the sick, the, the first, the bolded sentence is the same as the sentence under it. There's no, there's no change to it.
Yeah, I, I guess the bottom line is the, the, the board is basically, has to make certain findings. So in this case, the fi- the finding called for by the ordinance is stated. Um, we don't, shorten it to say, you know, the board has made the above finding, um, but effectively the board has to make that finding, so. As long as we clarify, the board has made the finding, you know, number nine above, we could, we could adjust that if you prefer.
That's, I guess, if that's the way you do it, I guess, we just leave it that way. I, I would say. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Okay. Seven, the requested use will not by its addition to a neighborhood cause an excess of that particular use that could be detrimental to the character of said neighborhood. The proposed new use and formalization of Levitt Court will not cause an excess of that particular use that could be detrimental to the character of said neighborhood. Eight, the proposed use is in harmony with the purpose and intent of this ordinance. The proposed formalization of Levitt Court is consist- consistent with the purposes and intensive intent of the NZO and will allow for improvements to be made to the site. Nine, the proposed use shall not be conducted in a manner as to admit any dangerous, noxious, injurious, or otherwise objectionable fire, explosion, radioactive, or other hazard, noise, vibration, smoke, dust, odor, or other form of environmental pollution. As, as is demonstrated in the application for special permit, the construction of Levitt Court shall not be conducted in a manner so as to admit any dangerous, noxious, injurious, or otherwise objectionable fire, explosion, radioactive, or other hazard, noise, or vibration, smoke, dust, odor, or other form of environmental pollution.
Thank you very much. All right, given all of those findings and conditions and where we have inserted, um, new material. Is there anything outstanding that a board member wants to, um, have reflected in our review at the meeting where we have our final review of the decision and take a vote? Have we left anything off the list?
Hey, and Sherri, could I, if I could just add in there, um, uh, we have taken note of, uh, the comments that the board members have made thus far, and we're assuming in the draft decision, you're looking at it, your next meeting, it will have all that in there. Um, my question, I guess, would be on the condo association, uh, documents. Uh, is the, uh, condition there, is the assumption for that draft condition, that would be, uh, the planning board, uh, shall review and approve the condo documents and then essentially to address the issue that was discussed earlier this evening. As opposed to submission of them, uh, that the board reviews and approves.
Do we have a placeholder for that, uh, in the list that, any of the lists that we've, um, read tonight, or do we need to add that if we decide?
We had a placeholder for the condo docs to be submitted. I think the question was whether or not they were, uh, submitted to satisfy the requirement or submitted and reviewed and approved by the, the board. We just want to, by the way.
Our, I don't remember that we've gone through in detail condo documents. I know they've been submitted to us, but we haven't actually reviewed them in a planning board meeting as part of an approval process.
I don't have objection myself, as long as the language we discussed earlier is in there, meaning the cross easements, for instance. I just wanted to make sure we're clear about whether or not that's submission versus a review.
So what I'm, um, what the board has required in the past, just to, and, and how I, I, my recollection is. So you would require, for example, that, um, the special permits be referenced and that there be cross easements and, um, uh, you know, the maintenance plan and the requirement that both, that, that everybody is responsible for the maintenance, for example. Um, and then those provisions, we would provide that draft to the planning office. It would say, yes, that's included. Then we would record the documents and then provide it back to the city for their files, uh, for the issuance of the occupancy permits.
So it's really an approval by the office to ensure that everything's in there so that we don't have to plow through all that legalese if for no other reason.
Correct.
With it, everything's in there. So as long as we have them referenced here, um, we'll leave the review, um, to the planning office.
Understood. Thank you.
So, um, Bonnie, I have a question. So just to, uh, ask in a different way, who is going to approve those documents? Is it the planning office, Andy? I understand it could be reviewed, I could be submitted. And I guess the question always comes up if there was a disagreement on whether those documents conform to decisions of, of the respective boards. Um, obviously, there could always be litigation down, down the line, but, but is there a specific entity that approves that?
Yeah, so our office would review that, obviously, for the content that's relevant here, and, uh, if we needed assistance, we would discuss with Copeland and Page, the city's legal counsel, uh, and coordinate from there.
Well, again, I'm, I'm sorry, Andy. I understand review, but to me, I think legally reviewing and approving are two different things.
Agreed.
Oh, I, I think, no, I, I agree with you, Dawn. Um, so I have no problem saying reviewing and approving the condominium documents to assure that the, uh, required references to the special permits and the conditions relative to cross easements and operation and maintenance of stormwater system are included.
I, I understand that, that's, to me, that's, that's a reasonable condition. Attorney me, what you don't want to do is for us to also get involved in other things that are beyond the purview of, of the permits.
Right.
I suppose.
Yeah, right, which is why I limited it to that.
Right. I mean, I'm sure, okay, I don't, I, you know, I'll defer to the rest of the board and Andy, but, uh, Andy, I think.
I would agree entirely based on our typical reviews with Copeland and Page. There's no reason in this case to ask them to review the condo docs as to form, uh, more of the content that's required here specifically by the board.
Okay, so we've got, got agreement on how that's going to be done, right? Okay, so we've got, got agreement on how that's going to be done, right? Okay. So that leaves us ready to continue this hearing to the next date after the planning, after the zoning board. So does that make sense for our, what is it, May nineteenth meeting?
That would. That would be great if we could continue to May nineteenth, please.
Okay.
Before we do that, um, yeah, I just wanted one thing for clarification. So the decision, the draft decision that we'll be getting, um, will include the, uh, five waivers that are listed in the staff report and the sixth waiver that, uh, was identified in terms of grade at the intersection and potentially the seventh one that I raised relating to street numbers. Those will be listed as part of our decision on, uh, either the, um, actually, I guess the lobby subdivision waivers, correct?
Yeah, correct. So we will provide the draft decisions for you for your next meeting, uh, and those will be, uh, incorporated in there for your review.
Thank you.
And, and vote.
And vote, yeah.
Okay, um, the other thing, I, I, I guess another reason I didn't put it out there before to wait for making the final, uh, making the, taking the vote is that we still don't have approval from the ZBA for a two-family use on twenty-seven Hancock. Minor detail, but pretty important, not a minor one. I'm saying that sarcastically. So again, we couldn't even approve this tonight if we wanted to because that would have to come first.
Well, uh, Madam Chair, not entirely true, right? Um, they have approval for a two-family on, uh, twenty-one to twenty-five.
Correct, but not twenty-seven, so.
Right, but you still need Levitt Court for twenty-one to twenty-five.
Right, exactly. But anyway, just to, you know, tie it up with a bow and make sure we've got all the issues out there.
Right.
So, um, you're in agreement and your client is for a continuance to, um, May nineteenth?
Yes, please.
All right, I would like to have a motion to that effect. Somebody, wait a minute, wait a minute. Somebody who hasn't spoken yet from the planning board, just to make sure you're there and not just.
Move.
Thank you, MJ.
I will second it, Leah.
Okay, MJ and Leah, thank you. Um, I'm gonna take role. Al- Alden? You're procused, right?
I refuse myself, yes.
Thank you. Beth?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So we'll see you at our next meeting. Thank you very much, everybody, for this.
Thank you very much.
All right, um, we have one set of minutes to approve under other business for, um, April seventh. Do I have, there, there's been some review of that, um, nothing substantive. So I guess I need a motion to approve with amendments as amended.
So moved. It's Beth.
Beth, thank you. Second?
I can second that, MJ.
Okay, MJ. Any further, uh, anything substantive that anyone would like to bring up, uh, for an edit of those minutes?
I sent a small correction, eyes, so it's, that's fine with that.
Okay. Um, I don't remember who was here or not at the last meeting, so I'm just gonna call your name, and if you weren't there, please abstain.
Two minutes ago.
This is four, seven, so it's, um, yeah. Alden Clark?
Yes.
Beth Delio?
Yes.
Uh, Tanya Hartford?
Yes.
Liam McGovern?
Yes.
Rick Tainter?
Yes.
MJ Verde?
Yes.
Don Walters?
Yes.
Bonnie Sontag, yes. Okay, those minutes are approved, and I am assuming we'll have the minutes from, uh, the last meeting at our next meeting, along with tonight's minutes, um, to approve at our next meeting. Um, although I wasn't here at the last meeting, the planning updates, that was, uh, clarified by Rick and Andy, so you know, we're, we're going with that. If there are any questions, um, we can answer those right now. Uh, we've transformed our planning into, um, our planning priorities into reviewing sections of the, uh, zoning rewrite. And that's okay. Um, any other, I don't have any other updates from myself. Any other updates from anybody else on the board?
Um, Bonnie, this is Tanya. I, I can provide my update. So, um, so I, I submitted my resignation to the board, um, this week. So, um, as some of you might know, I started a new job in January, which has been great for me, but also taking up a lot of my time, so I'm just trying to cut back on some other, um, things that I'm working on. And so I decided to step away from the planning board. Um, so I, I told them, I told, uh, the mayor and Bonnie and Andy that my last meeting would be the, the second, the next meeting in May, although, do we have a special meeting next week? Did I see, do we, are we reviewing a zoning at all, or no? Is that not us?
No, that's, that's the same night. We're gonna do some zoning review that night. Zoning rewrite that night. Yeah, I'm glad you could be there because we can wrap up Hancock Street with your vote.
Yep, so I'll, I'll wrap up at that meeting, and then, um, I know Bonnie, I, I submitted some, some suggestions, but I think, uh, suggested person, but I think that person didn't have the time. So if you guys have other members or other folks in town who might be a good fit, I think Bonnie and Andy probably would be interested in hearing that.
We always are. Uh, we actually do have a candidate, um, but because he hasn't formally ma- written his letter to the mayor yet, Rick and I probably shouldn't talk about him because, um, you know, it's not over, well, that's a stupid phrase about, it's not open till the fat lady sings. I don't know. Totally irrelevant, but, um, just to let you know, we have someone in the wings, but that doesn't mean that we don't want to hear of potential other candidates, um, because well, we just need to be prepared. So, um, Tanya's request for you to consider other people that might be interested and contact them and have them contact me is out there and always, always relevant and helpful. So, Tanya, what are we gonna do for, do you want to designate somebody else to be the last person coming to the meeting?
I know, in not being able to ever use my participant code, because I have no idea where it is.
Anyway, it's, it's been wonderful to have you with us, and we definitely gonna miss you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next time.
Thank you. I'm, it's a bummer that we, we haven't been able to see each other in person, but, um, but I will say it has made it a little easier to be able to, um, sit at home in my office, um, while these meetings are going on. I actually think it's, it's actually helped a little bit, um, but, uh, but certainly, still, this is, this takes a lot of time, and especially as you guys are going through the zoning rewrites. I just, it's, um, I think, I think that's a good time for me to say goodbye.
Understandable.
Good luck with that.
Bonnie, I have a question, of course, Tanya. Good luck with everything.
Thank you.
The applicant, um, just, did you and or Rick reach out to him? Or her, or did the applicant reach out to you?
The candidate?
The candidate.
Yeah, I re- I found somebody in the neighborhood who knew this guy, and, um.
Okay, I just.
Yeah. He was referred, yeah, let's put it this way, he was referred to us. By the way, Tanya's absolutely right. I did interview somebody that she knew about, um, who has travel, um, considerations, so she may get more control over her life and come back. She was really, um, seriously interested, but just couldn't make the commitment. But this other person, uh, came to us through a referral.
Thanks, thank you.
That's the way we get them. I, I really do not ever want to see, as long as I'm here, an announcement by the mayor and the newspaper that we need a planning board member, because that really opens us up to the next person who walks in the door. Um, whereas if we have referrals, we have people we know that we think would be a good fit, that's already a step in the right direction, um, to getting the right kind of people on the board. So that's sort of my personal preference, and, um, that's why we always say, if you know anybody at any time, don't wait for somebody to resign or not re-up, um, let us know. Okay, Andy, do you have any updates?
Uh, no, thank you, Chair. I did, uh, send an email out to the board with some information, like you said, I think, earlier on the, uh, zoning rewrite project, some of the older, uh, documents we had put together with the consultant. And, uh, as I indicated in the email I sent to the board today, uh, we'll be plugging away with the remaining, um, sections of the ordinance, uh, with the package that we just put into the council, or is going in for Monday night's meeting. Uh, we plan on having a public hearing on that on June second, I believe it is, uh, that we would advertise for jointly typical first item on the agenda. Um, most of that is housekeeping, so I'll explain that at the next meeting, just to give you a recap beforehand.
Great, yeah. Um, just looking at it very, very briefly, it looked like a lot of stuff in there. So if you can give us the highlights, maybe it'll be a dry run for the public, for the review at the public hearing too, because I don't think people want to know, uh, are, are interested in some of the really detailed stuff in there that's just literally housekeeping.
Agreed. Some, a lot of that is fine-grained stuff that is probably not worth most people's time, but yeah, we'll, we'll do.
So we'll, we'll try to just touch on the highlights and the, and the stuff that's important for our review. Um, and this gives us an opportunity to see something before it goes before, um, uh, city council and joint public hearing, which is a process that I'd like to see more of. So this is just good, good, um, practice on our part. So if there's nothing else, I guess I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Dawn.
I'll, I'll second that.
Thank you, Tanya. I'll call roll. Alden?
Yes.
Beth?
Yes.
Tanya?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Bonnie, yes. So, thank you, everybody. Uh, good night.
All right.
Thanks, Bonnie.